Ludicrous to apply the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under a individual with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing. We're gonna have a moment of silence for fine folks in the Ukraine or something here tonight. Thank you all very much. I will have a little call.
Here, Haslam.
Yeah.
Alderman Smith, Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers. Alderman Eidman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince. Alderman Arberster.
Here.
Here, we have a call.
Very good. For approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, takes us down to personal appearance. Gina Bryant, you're here with us this evening, so you take the podium.
Hello, guys. Did you guys all get a copy of the annual report that I sent?
Yes, we did.
Very good. I'm just gonna like go over some highlights, but as of December 31st of 2020, 2020, we had 84 residents in, for the year 2020. Our flat rents, which flat rents is a percentage of the fair market rent to, it's made to encourage people on the higher end of low income to live in public housing, so that way the area doesn't become that area, so it's more diverse. So our flat rents were 424 for a two-bedroom and 587 for a three-bedroom, and that's only if they're above very low income. Below that is 30% of their adjusted income. Then we go down to, let's go to waitlist management. So we approved 11 new admissions. Six of those families were extremely low income. Every year we have to meet, 40% of our new admissions have to be extremely low income. Forty-three applicants were removed from the waiting list. Thirteen were denied, 30 were non-responsive or found other housing, so that way it didn't seem like 43 was so bad. During the pandemic, our housing scores were paused. We did not get a REACT score, which we were due for in 2021, and we did not get a new FAS score, but so we're still going off of our 2019 numbers. So that has, that tells us how much money we're gonna get based on our score. Then for operating subsidy, we collected a little over $84,000 from operating subsidies, and we collected a little over $100,000 in tenant rent, and capital fund grants is a grant we get to modernize our units. We received a little over $71,000. We mainly focused on, we replaced 10 floors, 10 bathroom vanities, 10 countertops, and 10 sinks in 10 units, and we redid sidewalks, not all of them, just a couple sections that were needing some attention. And we have a balance of $18,000 left over, and basically I'm waiting to see if anybody's furnace or air conditioner goes out, so that way we use that money for that. If not, the money will get spent on three more units for floors. We received a $5,000 community development grant to put in a community garden. We put in 10 plots for people to plant vegetables and whatever flowers they want. And then our FAS score is next, and still 72 from leftover. That's what I got. Any questions?
Gina, did I understand you're right to say that 40% of your admissions each year have to be, is that new admissions?
Yes, new admissions.
Forty percent of your new admissions have to be below that?
And it's fiscal year, so this report, I focused on calendar year. So ours is fiscal year, and our fiscal year starts January 1st until June 30th. So, and so like if they move in and they're under, they are in extremely low income, and they get a job, or they, somebody else moves in with them, and they're above that extremely low income, that does not matter. They can stay in housing as long as they qualify to move in.
Right. Yeah, that was my question. It was just the new admission.
Yes, just new.
New admission, correct?
Yes.
And Gina, do you know offhand, what's the average wait time a person might sit on that waitlist?
Three to six months has been our track record for waiting time. I can't guarantee you that because it's just a matter of how long people want to stay, or they don't have a time limit on what they can do, but it's been about three to six months steady since I started.
I mean, do they stay in contact with you, or how do they express continued interest in getting a unit?
Usually when they're about fourth on the list, then I send them a letter asking if they're still interested, and then if they don't respond to the letter, I try to call them, and if I can't get ahold of them that way, then I move them off the waiting list.
Okay.
So they are, I do express, tell them when they apply, let me know if your address or phone number changes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Gina, thank you. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Robinwood used to be a, it was a great place for me to do ministry because there was, there was a lot of things going on down there, but it's just, it's incredible now the community that it's become.
Yes.
And it's, and you can, the chief will testify to that, so.
It makes my job really boring, though, so.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's okay, so.
Did you take over another apartment complex?
Yeah, yeah.
I would love to, but that might be a little more.
Yeah. Great job, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Bye-bye. Okay, takes us to our city administrators' report. You've got an update at your seats. Item one, we need to get our health committee together and start talking about what that number looks like for employee participation. Do you all want to meet in March? Did you want to meet with Sona's and Legan, or do you want to just meet internally with just the group and discuss what that number is? Because I know the chief has some stuff he wants to talk about as well.
Yeah, I mean, you know, last year when we met with Sona's and Legan, I mean, there was quite a bit of information gathered out of there and stuff, so.
Okay, I'll get in touch with them, see what they, what their schedule looks like. We have their submittals in for the on-call Stormwater Consultants. We've been kind of, bad weather's bumped into us, so we haven't had a chance to do anything. Does anybody want to sit down and look at these packets? Because otherwise it'll be Steve and I, and we'll review them and then interview somebody on, you know, interview one of the three that we've received, and then bring them to the board.
I don't have a problem helping out.
Okay, okay.
Bye.
I can't think of anybody more qualified than Happy and Steve and you, so.
Amen to that. I mean, we have so many committees, I'm trying not to overtax everybody, but if somebody wants to help out, we can be happy to do that. Okay. And the other items on here, if you've got any questions, be happy to answer. Oh, that's, that's it. Okay, thank you very much. Takes us down to our staff report. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. So, everyone has my report. Hopefully you all reviewed it. Touch on a few other things that aren't in the report is the snow removal that we've had to experience over the past few weeks, and not, not to discard the heavy rains as well. So, first round of snow removal, one kind of, one kind of slow, we all know that. The second round of snow and ice removal, we didn't, we didn't suffer a single breakdown. That's due to the fact that we went through each piece of equipment, front to back, dock to bottoms, greased, maintenance, replaced parts. And we actually got one of the trucks that we didn't have in service the first time back in service, so we actually had two, two large dump trucks and three small pickups. I think everybody was pretty happy with the results, what we got done this time, so.
How's our salt supply?
Uh, down to about a third of what we had, so.
There's one more snow, and?
Yeah, hopefully no more snow, but yeah. Yeah, we can handle another small snow just fine. Yeah, equipment, staff, everything's coming up nicely. I do have four drivers that have their CDL permits, two of them going to take the written air break and pre-trip test tomorrow, and then two more next week, so that'll bring us up to a total of 11 drivers, which that will aid in a lot of our emergency stuff that takes longer than 12 hours. We try to keep them out of the vehicles and off the roads in 12 hours or less. Just like during the past snows, we've, we were able to rotate the staff out, nobody worked more than 12. I know prior to this, I mean, when I, when I applied before, I mean, there was times where we applied for 30-plus, so.
Steve, I did hear a comment and stuff after the last snow and stuff, and the fact that you allowed your guys to take off.
Yes.
One of the residents noticed that, that, you know, the maintenance shed was closed and stuff, and commented. Basically, were we shorting overtime and stuff, but no, it was a voluntary basis, I'd talk to you about it and stuff. I think that was a good momentum builder.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Steve. Chief?
Good evening. I don't have a tremendous amount to report on. The vehicles, the new vehicles were taken up today, or one of the two was taken up today to get the equipment outfitted. The vehicles, the old vehicles are being downfitted. I believe one of them is gonna go to the building department, and then I believe they're wanting to look at selling the other one, so. Still, full staff, we've gotten moved back in, everything's working well, still seeing the computer people every week or couple weeks, working on little things, but I mean, it's, it's going a lot better, so. I know Alderman Donovan mentioned at one of the previous meetings, when we discussed Officer Under First Pete, sick time, maybe looking at some possibility of forgiving some of the sick time that he had at the time of the injury. We looked up, and, and at the time, he had like 264 hours of sick time the day that he was injured, and he was, I think, just hoping that maybe, maybe to discuss that a little bit and see if that's something that the board would consider, just to give him a little bit of a buffer should something else come up. But that's about all I have. Unless anybody had any questions?
Yeah, you know, Eric, I think, you know, and I told you, because of the nature of his injury, to have to use up the amount of time that he did and stuff, I don't know, I think we need to do something, reinstate some of his time, you know, because that was an accumulated time over a period of time.
Yes, and I'd like to say, I mean, he was appreciative that you allowed him to use that to offset his, his work comp. He's not asking for this. This is just something that Alderman Donovan brought up, and I wanted to bring to your attention, so.
I mean, and that's what sick time is for and stuff, but still, to me, it was the nature of the injury and stuff. I, you know, and because of the future things going on with him, I think we need to reinstate some of that in the event that he does lose some time because of that.
So one reason he has to use it is he has to maintain his health insurance. So that's what he was helping, helping also pay for, was, was keeping family health, because he was covered by workers' compensation, but the other health had to be covered. So, I mean, you're then giving him a, another benefit that the other employees aren't getting. It's not just reinstating hours.
I don't have a problem with that. You know, if we'd look at another employee having an injury like that, then I'd say I'd do the same thing.
What, what do we need to do to actually bring this home and have somebody do some equation to get to dollars and cents or hours, or what, what's the exercise that we need to do?
We'll look at what, what he burned up while at home, and then come back with those numbers for you on what sick leave was or vacation time that he used.
So you'll make a proposition to the board that we will?
I may not make a proposition because I'm not in agreement with it, but I'll give you what the numbers are, and you can maybe make, take a percentage of that and come up with a number you'd like to pass.
I was gonna say, if you do that, if you could include any, I lost my words here, any guidelines, rules, or whatever that would pertain to it, I guess the benefit, outline of the benefits that would pertain to it, so we can get a better grasp of, here's what the rules are, here's what we set for all the employees, and this is just how much above that it goes.
The guideline is that you use it up, use it up until you, until you've exhausted it, then you can go into a bank.
Yeah, I don't have any idea what, how many hours they get, how many, like, that's what I mean. I lost my words right before I spoke, so it came out really poorly, but I don't, I don't know the, I, policy, policies that would, would apply to that. So if you can include that above just whatever his hours were, that'd be great, just so I could...
So Happy, if he has an injury now and he has no sick time, then he's right back to where he's not gonna be covered unless he pays his own insurance or something?
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
The board can make an exception at that point, and then you would have a reason to make that exception.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it's just, we wait and see if he needs more sick time and then make a decision, rather than just saying, here's a bunch of sick time, because he's accruing it now, he's been accruing it.
Yes.
Since he's been back.
Yes.
I mean, what does he have now, just?
I think it's.
You get a day, you get 12 hours a month. You get six hours per pay period. So you get 12 hours a month, is what you, is what the employees are feeling like.
I personally would feel more comfortable if, if we see if he needs it and then decide to make an.
Versus rushing in, because we want to make sure our words are right with it as well, that we're not setting a precedence.
Well, you're following policy, you know. We don't want to, we're setting new policy.
Yeah.
I agree with that. I say, if he needs it, yeah, then, then we dig into it, but let's not change something, you know, because, and I, I understand what Happy's going, and I feel, feel the same way with Bob and the nature of this, this incident.
That's the nature of the injury.
I understand that, but.
Slip on the ice and hurt his back or something, I mean, this was an act of.
Yeah, so I think we, I think.
That's the difference, not just a, a normal injury and stuff. This is over and above, because there is some things that are gonna linger on.
But Bob, this could happen in their line of work. This could happen to anybody, so.
I, not disagree with you.
And I'm not minimizing, but it could, it could happen to, it could happen again to anybody, you know, and it's dangerous work.
But also another consideration along those lines, if you're talking about accumulating 12 hours a month, that's only one shift, right?
Yeah, that'd work for 12 hours.
Whereas a, a regular employee is, that's a shift and a half. So I mean, it's more important, it's, it costs him more, I think.
I mean, I just, it's the nature of the injury that bothers me about this whole thing and the fact that, you know, I mean, anyhow, I'll agree with what everybody else agrees to, but.
And again, don't, don't feel obligated. Pete is not asking for this. This was something that, that was brought up by Alderman Donovan, and I just wanted to provide the information that he asked for, so.
Yeah, I think it's something that we take into consideration that we might have to discuss in the future, but I don't want to rush into, to it.
And I agree to your point, that is, I guess, an alternative and stuff, but.
I mean, we would be creating a one-off situation that we would either be good with or not good with. You know, it should, going forward, it shouldn't impact policy, right? I mean, it shouldn't, it's, we're approving a one-off situation.
And you can certainly look at it that way, but you know, you're gonna have employees that are getting hurt, and, and they're gonna say, well, why is my injury not as important as his?
Yeah.
And you, so that's why I think what Happy's bets, it's a decision you all can make. The only concern I have is, I need to evaluate whether or not doing something retroactive is in compliance with the work comp, with work comp policy. You know, we can't, we can't pay them double and have that benefit. You know, that's an insurance benefit, and we don't want to cause any problems with our employees' eligibility with that plan, because the idea is that it can't work. That's why they get the work comp benefit, because the injury. If we then compensate them anyway, I'm a little concerned about that, right? Because the whole idea of the, of the workers' compensation benefit is that they cannot work because of work-related injury, and so they get that benefit. And if we're going to essentially compensate them anyway for that period of time, I just need to look into it, because it's really unusual. The discussion you're having is very unusual. It's unusual to have a specific named employee discussed at board meetings repeatedly. That's causing me a little bit of heartburn. I think this is an administrative decision that should be made by the city administrator when you're dealing with one employee. So I have a number of kind of legal issues with how this is progressing, but, you know, the board sets the policy, but what you're doing now is, you wanna, you wanna manage it, right? And so, so that's probably my, my happiest thing, is endorsing it. I'm not trying to speak for him, but, you know, I just wanted to address those things, but certainly, if this is discussed again, we need to have it as an agenda. I mean, it's not on your agenda to talk about work comp benefits and sick time, and you've had extensive conversation, it's not on your agenda, so you also need to think about that, put it on agenda, and really hash it out. Very good. Thank you, chief. Any questions? Thank you very much. We need to have a COVID discussion. Can we leave that, take that out? We can probably take it out. The last email I got from, from the Health Department was, numbers were going down. They were really happy. It was from Jenny, what's her last name?
Miller.
Miller, thank you. She just, you know, she sent a last email out and just was so happy the numbers were going down. It popped up a little bit, but our number is still a four over a 14-week span, so way under our metric. So, and it seems like that has stayed that way for a few weeks now. Are we gonna leave COVID discussion on there, or are we gonna strike it until we hope it doesn't happen again, or numbers change? Strike it? Take it off.
Strike it, take it off.
We'll do that. Any committee reports?
Not really. Park were meeting yesterday, but nothing really to report from it.
Okay.
Mike's gonna have a TikTok for getting news out about the comprehensive plan work we're doing. Maybe not, but we met, we met yesterday for the comprehensive plans. If you're interested, Mike and I are on that committee.
Wow, that's awesome.
We're looking for lots of input.
That's the steering committee. There is a staff committee met with them, steering committee met with RPC, so it's underway. There'll be other public meetings that you can attend to get input. There'll be other surveys to answer, other stuff that'll put this together, and it'll take about 18 months, so it's not an overnight kind of deal. Making progress. Starting, yes. All righty. Takes us to public comments.
How's everybody doing today?
Good.
Good. I'm Todd Wilder with Jokers Incorporated.
This is my brother Brent Wilder with Jokers Incorporated. Together, we've been with Jokers for about, probably 30 years now. We've paved streets like Market Street, Fourth Street, Cedar, I mean, probably at least a dozen streets around town over the last 10, 15 years. So, we're just wanting to basically, you know, bring, bring up the bid form, you know, wondering everybody's thoughts on it for, for this last street overlay project.
If I get interjected, sorry, don't let somebody toes, but this is public comments time, so they can make a comment, and this is your opportunity, their opportunity to be, to say something, it's your opportunity to listen to them, and if you want to have a discussion. It's on the agenda as a, as a bid item, and I would, I would discuss it at that point, but, you know, that they want to give their point of view. Want to say something, they certainly can. It's a public comment, but, you know, there are legal issues about in the bid process. I would just caution you of that as well for first. So go ahead.
So, has everybody had a chance to read the email, letter, and all the documents we sent through?
Yes, I am.
Would you guys like us to read it aloud?
I think just state your case. You can go through the paperwork if you want. Okay. They got their receipts.
I'm just gonna read it. We would like to bring the following to your attention. The St. Genevee, to the 2022 St. Genevee City Council meeting, Jokers Incorporated submitted the low bid on the St. Genevee Street Repaving Program 2022. At the bid opening, the Joker Stink bid was disqualified for failing to present a 5% bid bond. We would like to point out that the bid requirements for this project were ambiguous, and therefore Joker Stink should be awarded the contract. Bid bonds are usually submitted in conjunction with the project's contract, unless it is specified otherwise. It was not specified otherwise in this project's invitation to bid. Joker Stink understands that a bid, 5% bid in performance and payment bonds from a company licensed to do business in Missouri is listed as requirement number one. Joker Stink is prepared to submit a bid bond in performance bond in conjunction with its contract. Requirement number two states that the contractor shall perform compaction and depth testing in performance of MoDOT standards and specifications. Joker Stink is prepared to fulfill the requirements, but also this cannot happen until the contract has been awarded and the construction begins. So therefore, likewise, requirement three shall provide a certificate of insurance. Requirement number four comply with the permanent wage laws and our items Joker Stink are prepared to submit, but again, cannot be fulfilled until after the contract is awarded or the construction has begun. Thank you for taking the time to attend this matter, and we hope you can see it from our perspective. The proposal and bid would have stated 5% of the bid amount must accompany each bid Joker Stink would have submitted at the time of the bid. We feel failing to accept our low bid will be a great financial loss to the city of St. Gene. So if you review this contract form, the contract form from St. Gene, it states the city of St. Gene shall require the following: Bid 5% of the bid performance and payment bonds from a company licensed to do business in Missouri. It never states that you need that at the time of the bid opening. Contractors shall perform compaction and depth testing in performance with MoDOT standard specification. We cannot supply that at the time of the bid opening.
That would be at the time of the work.
Contractor and subcontractor, contractor shall provide, provide a certificate of insurance for the following coverage. for the following coverage and listing the city of St. Genevee as additionally insured. So then, you know, we, we're invited to bid on projects in multiple cities in a surrounding perimeter, you know, 100-mile radius of St. Genevee. We probably get invited to projects six times a day, two and a half dozen, two, a dozen times a day. And it always states bid security and the amount of 5% of the bid amount must accompany each bid. I mean, it's specified must accompany. I mean, there's multiple documents here from multiple different municipalities surrounding St. Genevee that states it must accompany each bid at the time of the bid opening. One from St. Gene does not specify that. It simply says bid 5% of bid performance and payment bonds from a company licensed to do business in Missouri. Does not say must accompany at the time of bid.
So basically, we feel like the number two about the compaction at the time of the work means that we can provide the bid, the performance bond at the time that the work begins or the time that it is awarded.
So. And we have projects going on with multiple cities around us and other private companies, you know, half million dollar, quarter million dollar projects that don't require bid bonds. So it was simply vague to us, so we didn't supply the bid bond at the time of the bid open.
But we, but we also feel like it can still be supplied if we are awarded to us the way it, it is written there is what we're getting at, so.
So this is kind of our argument.
Okay.
And we're basically wondering, call it something.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Great, move forward. Consent agenda?
Second.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
All righty. Takes us to old business. Bill number 4469, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevee, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the city of St. Genevee and St. Genevee Municipal Band.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
We'll have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Ideman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbruster.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number 4469 now becomes ordinance 4393.
Thank you. Takes us to bill number 4473, an ordinance amending chapter 500 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 2 Building Code, Section 500.110 in its entirety.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Arbruster.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Ideman.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yep.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number 4473 now becomes ordinance 4394.
Thank you. Takes us to bill number 4474, an ordinance adding to section 500.100, definitions of chapter 500 Building Codes of the St. City, of St. Genevee Code of Ordinances.
I'd like to move for approval.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Ideman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbruster.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number 4474 now becomes ordinance 4395.
Thank you. Takes us to new business. Need approval of the low bid submitted by CE Contracting of St. Genevee, Missouri in the amount of $143,054.40 for parkwood concrete replacement.
I'd like to move for approval.
Second.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes, I need approval of a low bid submitted by Verdenbaum and Contracting of St. Genevee, Missouri in the amount of $190,705 for a 2022 street repaving program.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good. Takes us to bill number, first and second, first reading of bill number 4475, an ordinance of the St. Genevee Board of Aldermen authorizing the city administrator to utilize Cochran Engineering for quality control on the Parkwood Drive Concrete Replacement Project.
I'd like to move for approval.
Sir?
Just going to have a little discussion on that first.
On this one? Okay.
Yes. Basically, they've just given rates, but no idea what this is going to cost.
No, because we don't know yet until we dig into the concrete. So we're looking at time and materials, and that's all been the charging us for is the time and materials. We'll have concrete cores that we'll have to crack to see if it meets the 4,000 PSI after 28 days. And then when we get into the substrate, see what we're dealing with. And then if we need to get it tested, or if we don't need to get it tested, then we don't have to come in.
I want to ask Steve to come to the podium for a minute, please. You know, two questions and stuff, basically. One, with the future expansion out there, I mean, are we 100% sure we have enough utilities under that street since they would be connecting there for future expansion?
They, they wouldn't be connecting there. They'd actually be pulling off Progress Parkway. The elevation change there doesn't allow the water to get there, so.
Okay. Second, instead, you know, we're looking at a dollar amount and stuff, but because of all of the egress there that people need and stuff, like people that live back, like Mike and stuff, I would have liked to have seen kind of a detail of, you know, how they're going to proceed with this. I mean, are they going to go in there? I've seen where they are picking up streets like this, and they basically dig a trough in the time of the year with all the rain. I mean, we could have limited access in and out of there if there's not a formal plan. You know, are we going to take up like a strip of the road and replace that? Are we going to tear up the whole road in 100-foot sections? I mean, we've got a lot of people that need in and out of there, like Mike and those two cul-de-sacs.
You know, like most contractors, I mean, I've worked with, they always keep access open for the most part, especially for emergency vehicles and the facilities that are at the end of that road.
Right.
Whether it be by steel plates or having a load of gravel on hand, if they have to dump it in, they will. I mean, these guys do it every day, so.
Right. But is it still wrong not to ask for some kind of a plan in writing that shows how they're going to go about this?
Well, we could ask for it from, from CE now that they've been approved, they've been part of the contract. But our discussion included the fact that on the west side of that street, we don't have to tear off that concrete. So you'll have one lane that stays open and it'll go north and south. It'll just be the approaches getting into the cul-de-sacs that are there. And, you know, we, they will probably only do half of it at a time so that, you know, can leave access for the homeowners. Because they've had to do this in other jurisdictions, other, other places.
It's always safe to be sure.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I trust these contractors that they've done this kind of work, but we can ask them for some extra details, and I suspect they'll be willing to, to come forward with something like that. Yeah. And Bob, whenever, when the project starts, I'll notify dispatch and the fire department and ambulance district as well. And they can come in off point base and around Oakwood as well or something.
But it seems like details are important when you talk about projects and stuff.
They are, but we didn't come up with an engineering plan which would have had that type of, of process put in place that they would have had to accept it. We saved the money on the engineering and just wanted to get into the concrete part of it, so we utilized the money the best way possible. So, yeah, we don't, we don't have anything like that upfront. We can ask them what they want to do. I know they'd like to maybe make it one-way at, at certain points for safety of their employees, because you still have another route to get out going down Oakwood over to, not Billmore, whatever that, that street is, I can't think of it. So there are two ways to get around in there. Anyway, so if that doesn't have anything to do with concrete, it's just the testing part of it.
So I have one motion, do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading.
I'll second that.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Second reading of bill number 4475, an ordinance of the St. Genevee Board of Aldermen authorizing the city administrator to utilize Cochran Engineering for quality control on the Parkwood Drive Concrete Replacement Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
To have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Arbruster.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Ideman.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number 4475 now becomes ordinance 4396.
Thank you. Takes us to bill number 4476, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevee authorizing final payment to Donsey Construction Incorporated for the remodel of the city police department and basement in the amount of $48,876.20 and approving the final contract price of $293,202.46.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
Hall of favor of that?
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading of bill number 4476, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevee authorizing final payment to Donsey Construction Incorporated for the remodel of the city police department and basement in the amount of $48,876.20 and approving the final contract price of $293,202.46.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Ideman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbruster. Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number 4476 now becomes ordinance 4397.
Thanks, you. Takes us to bill number 4477, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevee authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with BT Electric LLC for the electrical improvements, St. Genevee Water Plant, in the amount not to exceed $196,890.41.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Second reading of bill number 4477, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevee authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with BT Electric LLC for the electrical improvements, St. Genevee Water Plant, in an amount not to exceed $196,890.41.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Ideman.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbruster. Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number 4477 now becomes ordinance 4398.
Thank you. Is there any other business? There's no other business, so we'll call this meeting adjourned. Favor?
Bam!
I didn't know he could move that fast.
Only because they're real on the chair.
It would have been taller carpet or, it'd have got caught on the duct tape.
Oh, hey, don't let it spill on that carpet. Oh, my. It'll be wet in one spot.
You poke the bear, Bob, you poke the bear.
Watch your package, dude.
That's just the audit.
No more water at the meeting, it's for me.
I'm waiting for paper towels.
Ruff and stuff, and don't take crap off anything.
That's why we can't have nice things.
Yeah.
Hope the TV's getting all this.
That's right, I didn't like the work agenda.
Well, it's already been approved.
So we need to look at the paper towels that we're stocking here.
Not exactly in perfect.
It's like, there's like a TikTok making jokes of the brown paper towels at school. You know, you spill milk or whatever, you try to just like push it.
There you go, TikTok.
And eventually you just end up with more than what you add. There you go. Hey, I appreciate it. These aren't foundry, are they?
That wasn't on the agenda.
Do we edit this video and cut this out?
I don't think so.
It looks pretty good on TV now.
It does. It looks professional.
There we go.
Accidents do that.
That's right.
We're good.
That's right, I've got all the papers tied.
I never seen Happy Misses. Kidding, I am.
She tells me to get the hell out of here.
At least y'all know by now it's water in my cup.
Did someone approve it? I made a motion. And that's when the water spilled?
Yeah.
Did you second it? Okay, got it. So we're good, we're back on track.
Okay.
You got to have a city-approved cup or something.
Yeah, I'm not bringing this pool.
All right. All right, so we are talking redistricting tonight, just to start the discussion. David Bovin. David Bovin did all the heavy lifting, so. Oh, he's the one that did that.
Thank you, David.
He loved the drawings. Came up with the numbers. So.
Your fingers aren't expanding it?
No, it's, I tried it, but it.
It's just not, it's not easy to see it block by block. And even our pictures don't show it.
Happy had a wonderful thought for putting on the screen, but what I created did not lend itself to doing that.
Yeah, it's just not real. I'll, I'll pull them up, but it still doesn't, it's just a little too pixelated.
So can we take some markers and mark up?
Yeah, no. No.
Dry erase board or something.
So we have two options that we brought to you. One is a balance, all three of them are balanced. It depends on if you want to include the prisoners at the jail or not. And the reason we bring this to you is that there is no court case, there is no state statute that says they are or they aren't. When the census counts people, it counts everybody. If they're in jail, they're counted. So there's no discrimination in that. So they are counted as, as residents or as, as part of your residency in the city, even if they're only there that day that the census is going out. So then it, you know, those are the numbers that we're brought with. So I checked with the sheriff's office to see how many stay long, a long period of time, and talked to Mark Bishop about this, just to see if there's more that are, that aren't transient. You can consider most everybody to be transient. Eh, about 10% stay longer, but, you know, maybe up to a year, but it's not that much. So based on where the block shows on the, on our GIS, we figure it includes the jail and Windcrest. So Windcrest, we figured at about, it was about 54, 54 residents.
24 times 2.40.
Yeah, yeah. And then the remainder was what would be considered to be those that stayed more permanently at the jail facility, at least a year. So those would be considered. So those would be considered not transitional, not temporary or transient. So we threw those numbers out just to kind of figure out how then we would balance those, the districts. Figuring that if you live in that neighborhood, why should you have, why should there be fewer people to vote for an elected official as opposed to the other neighborhoods, which would be balanced with people that can vote, that we know or don't know. I mean, there's maybe they aren't allowed to vote for whatever reason. Because we can concentrate on it there. But, again, there's no particular decision. If the census counts you, the census counts you. But there are other communities that have done a reduction in number because of a jail facility to try to get more balance into the numbers of those that would be able to elect somebody to be in their ward. So we wanted to bring you two options. So one is with it, one is without it. If you want to make other changes, we have to look at it block by block. And the blocks are not block by block you're thinking, it's block by block however census draws it. And it can be, some of them are large, 336 people, some are two people, some, if you're in brochure, it's almost block to block. Except for where Alderman Idman lives, it's 136 people that extends around to Sycamore and extends all the way back to Pine Street. Yeah, so it doesn't, you can't just take it block by block and go, well, let's, you know, we've tried doing that, that's what David worked on, to get those, to get the numbers kind of balanced. And there's also eight other steps, and I won't go through every one of them, but there's eight other things that we have to look at when redistricting, trying to keep neighborhoods together. If there is a minority group, trying to keep that minority group together. If you're...
Neighborhoods, minorities, voting districts.
And we can't be off more than 10% total.
And the final goal is to try to keep incumbents in their ward, is number eight.
Yeah. So that's the final thing that we look at, and we kind of figured this out this year, it looked like there was gonna be some major changes because you've had, you have had a significant growth of population in town, counting the jail cell or not. So I think we ended up with 4,600 and some that would be outside of what the jail facility is, 4,999 is the total. So that's what we had to look at first off, is 4,999 divided by four, what does that give us? All right, let's draw them out, this is what the districts look like. And then it's, then we went with the other number, 4,633, so you're looking at 1158 per ward. So again, even it out, we want to try to get as even as we can, and keep it within that 10% total. And that's what you have before you, is those numbers and those figures. So I think what most everybody's concerned with is what kind of changes do we make? So option one, this is creating the jail facility in. This is where you see where we had to make adjustments. Because what we're doing is moving, we're moving down because you have so many people down here, that you have to take out one of these neighborhoods. But you have to do it both ways, to even this ward, which is Ward One, and then Ward Two, add enough people in. And then from Ward Three to Ward Four, again, to balance that out. So that's option one. Option two. So this is when we're not taking all of those numbers to Ward Three. Now see, that's, you can tell the big difference because of how much smaller these changes are. Again, we have a lot more residents than we've had in the past. And we do have a lot more, I think, down in Ward Three than what we've had in the past because of, because of the rest homes.
And the River View out there and the apartment complex.
And you're looking at even Ward's mansion in that neighborhood. It's up more, but you needed to move Ward Three into Ward Two because of, again, the amount of people. And here, we're trying to keep the neighborhood together. And then here, you're like, leave this movement award, come on, you can do it. Moving this from Ward Two into Ward One, again, so we can get enough people in that ward for that balance. And then Ward Four to Ward Three, just because we know Ashley lives there and we want, just the best with the life. What it came down to is the amount we needed was in that block.
Yes, and everything around that block is a huge block. It was either move that block, which is approximately 50 people, or move another block, which was 300 people, which would have caused massive changes in the other wards.
Yeah. So as you can see, at one time, they put this into Ward Three, trying to get the number balanced. So that's what they did, and that is a census block. What you see there in that little triangle is the way it's drawn up. You either leave it or don't. We can't discriminate as to where we cut that line, even on something like that. So that's what you're working with. So that's kind of the start of redistricting.
Can we have two smaller discussions here to break this thing in some pieces? Stop me if I start to irritate you guys too much, but what is, what is city government's obligation to anybody housed in a detention facility so we have a clear understanding of what our obligation is? I wouldn't want to automatically exclude anybody if we're under some obligation to represent them in some way. To me, my first inclination is it seems like we are not, but I want to make sure before I move in that direction.
Again, there are two schools of thought, and when you adopt, if you're going to make, if you're not going to include people in a jail, then you have to then, part of the motion is to then determine why you're doing that.
Yes.
And this is in discussions with Mark Bishop on how we should do that. Because again, there is no, there is no guidance from the state, and there are no legal decisions that have been made that give you clear direction. Cities have done it both ways, and attorneys have looked at it both ways.
So in your discovery, do you, do you both know, do you have a number, a percentage of, of the population of Ward Three that prison makes up? Like, how many people are there? What's the percentage of Ward Three that...
So it's 466, which that also includes Windcrest, so that's part of that block. So there's 350 some at the...
So there's about 350 on a semi-daily basis, and that number's fixing to grow.
And that's a rolling number, though, from day to day because of the situation?
Correct, not the same, 350 people.
Okay, so if we, if we deal with a number of 350, we really don't know, like, of those 350, those people are, may have held a driver's license or may have been, claimed residency in many different areas.
If they have the right to vote, they're not all gonna have the right to vote here, but the census counts them there, because that's where they were, and they use our services, our water, our sewer, our electric.
Okay. So they should have input into how, how those are managed by this board?
That's up to you.
Legally, though, I think what you're asking is, but they don't. Who has the input is the sheriff.
And they use their...
So it's not that, the inmates have no, they're in there and they don't, they don't have, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be able to vote for you.
No, functionally, I think, I think we're all, we could all drive to the same point functionally, but...
Yeah, legally, legally is what we gotta look at to what you want to do, and we've talked to that, but, Mark, do we have to, yeah?
Part of our mission is to leave nobody unrepresented, so I mean, that's what we have to make sure.
In that situation, there is, they've lost all their rights, Mike, and they've lost certain rights when they're incarcerated, so I can't see where the city should be beholding to inmate number 222, who's probably from Park Hills or somewhere else.
That's what I'm driving to as well.
Yeah, is, I don't see where we need to keep those folks, and legally, we shouldn't, I don't...
I think I'm with you, but I think it would be bad, we'd be remiss if we didn't have the discussion and have it on record that we talked about, it would be bad.
Because we make, we figure this count, it's based on census, the census does not discriminate on that basis. They are citizens, they're residents of your community at that time, that's the number that was counted, that's why, that's why communities will do that.
But if they have a release date and they're returning to a Park Hills or they're returning to some, like, I don't know legally how this would work if a, if a person being housed in a detention facility was a resident of Park Hills and an election came up, if that person maintains a right to vote, are they gonna exercise that right and should they?
Well, it's where he's registered, if he's...
Be able to vote in that municipality, they wouldn't vote in our...
No, they're not registered here.
No, they don't register to vote here.
You're not registered to vote in St. Genevieve, you're not voting.
So 350, we're talking about a smaller number, probably much smaller number.
So aren't these residents of the facility out there, aren't they accounted for on census where they live?
No.
No. No, they're counted where they are at the time of the census. Because, and that's the thing, we don't get information as to, okay, these folks are from Park Hills, these people are from Bullard County, and these folks come from Poplar Bluff. We don't know those, that thing, that we can estimate on who is what we would consider more permanent, and if it's, if you're there, let's say, a year, then I think that makes more of a permanent residency, which then gives them a little more footing as to being a resident of St. Genevieve. But if they're transient, whether they're in and out, then that's the argument, is that we don't need to count them because they'll be the same as a motel, same as an Airbnb. But they don't count people at Airbnbs and motels like that, that's not the way the census bureau works.
But say someone and their family got the census thing to fill out, and they were incarcerated, they could have been included in with their family wherever they reside.
Where they are.
Right.
I mean, either way, these are the numbers we have to deal with, whether people filled it out incorrectly or not.
So if we're not bound by the state to count them, I'd see why we should.
Yeah, I don't see why we should.
I could agree after we've had the discussion.
Right.
To gloss over it, I think would have been wrong.
Not discriminating against anybody because they are in and out.
So that still moves us to option two.
Which is my least favorite.
So...
I understand why it's our option, and I agree with it for that reason, but, I don't know, I don't like the idea of splitting neighborhoods.
Fifty-two.
And in this case, two, and then one of them that we're moving, you know, to move the brochure addition to Ward Two, leaves me wondering on future elections and stuff like that, if the resident pool is there to have people that would want to run for it because Ward Four is historically not contested that I can remember. And there's always been, for Ward Three, there's always been representative for the board from that subdivision. So it definitely seems like a lot of them. I don't know how much we can go into detail with that, but it does leave me...
You know, whether you have a thousand people in that ward or you have 2,000 people in that ward, the percentage of people that are gonna show up for that election, I don't know how that would affect it.
It's not showing up for the election, it's who's going to sign up to represent that ward. You know, if your ward is primarily apartment buildings, are those long-term renters, are they there for a little bit? Are they going to sign up to represent their ward?
Ashley, I hate...
Things like that, like, it can be kind of technical, but, I don't know, just looking at it this way, and then when you add on splitting the subdivisions.
I hate to pause this discussion, and I apologize, only because I want, I had one more point of clarification. And I do apologize, since you were deep...
No, you're fine. You're fine.
And I took that away from you, but what I'm also wondering is when you guys talked about the proposals, the criteria, it's mainly geographic, right? Like, not wanting to split neighborhoods, whatever, like, you mentioned eight criteria for making, decision-making, what were the, what were those eight roughly?
I don't think we included that in there.
I just, I heard one item that made me take pause, and I just want to get clarification if it comes back up here. Sure, sure, sure. I just think I misinterpreted something that I heard earlier, I just want to make sure.
Do you have those slides printed?
I don't have them printed, I got them on my computer, I printed all of them.
I don't want to derail this.
Standard criteria, here they are. Population equality, so the numbers have to balance. Compact districts of contiguous territory, so you can't add a spot that's not connected to the others. Retention of existing neighborhood boundaries, so as much as possible. Retention of precinct boundaries, so you don't want to take a ward and make a big, you know... Cohesion of existing communities of interest, so if you have a low-income area or, you know, like I would think something more like New York City, where you have a Spanish Harlem and a Harlem and a...
Yeah, we're getting warmer here.
Desire to retain historic boundaries, so I've always been in Ward One, I want to be in Ward One, consideration of incumbency.
Okay.
That's it?
Okay.
But back up to the one, talking about splitting neighborhoods, I mean, that's exactly what we're doing with option two.
These are guidelines.
Right. But that's, you know, because you have neighborhood watch programs and things like that.
There's no, the criteria is put before, here's what we have to do. We can't, here's one of those issues where we can't do, we have to do something, and we gotta follow that criteria. So something, nobody's gonna be happy about anything, something's gonna change. And as far as worrying about, and I understand what you're saying there, but you can't, it is a struggle, drives me nuts, because you don't have people running, but you can't worry about that because, I mean, we can't, we can't dictate that the way we set something up, I don't think, anyway.
I have to interject, I told Happy this, I worked hard to not have any of the AWD moved, and the brochure addition thing, it was inevitable unless you just go off the chart, just go...
Because we could probably make an adjustment on the international subdivision change, we could add that back in and see if that throws us off 10%. If we stay under that 10%, we can also look at the brochure addition change and see if that throws us off. I think they did, I think that was, that was the number that really kicked our butts.
And even if you, if you do that, and it doesn't throw you off, you're only talking about moving that brochure addition line over street by street, unless something drastic is possible.
I just wonder why this didn't come up before we all signed up for reelections and stuff to...
Because we didn't have the numbers, we didn't have any of the census information at the time.
Because this will affect...
But it affects next year, not this year.
We serve out for this next year and then make the accommodations next year.
Yeah, because you're gonna have to do wards and you'll have to, for people running and, you know, people to file in December of next year, we have to have this done. By December of next year, for people, you know, the ward's gotta be set up so people can file in that ward, so...
Because I, I think I'd just be curious to see how the census blocks are set up, and it's not out of doubt of any of y'all? Because I can't imagine how...
See how the census blocks are...
Uh-huh.
I think you're gonna see how the census blocks are set up.
Make house movers, just pick your house up and move it.
Oh, I'm not worried about me...
Well, it's about making sure everybody's represented.
What I'm looking at is what Ward Three is going to look like after that. You have, you no longer have a subdivision really in that neighborhood aside from...
Point Base.
Oh, yeah, Point Base and Robin.
I don't have the email...
They already have Ward Three that's just kind of circled there, and there's just nobody lives there.
The block in the center along 30th...
Right.
That's county. It's not the city. Louis Keane and those folks that live along there?
Okay.
That's county.
We had that, too.
I'll let you use your house.
So what is the deadline, happy to have this done?
I'd say December 6th, because that's when the, that's when you can... I'd say December 6th, because that's when the, that's when you can file again, that's when you file for municipal election. What are you thinking there, Mike?
Frankly, I'm thinking, I don't even know that it should be in my hands, and I really don't, I mean this respectfully, I really don't care as long as we've made sure we didn't just discount a whole group of people, and I think we had that discussion already, so I say we roll with changes and whatever happens, but, you know.
I want to look at is this area right here.
So this is Roger Edition. And you can see what Happy's talking about, each block, there's a census block except for this one. So this would be the people who live on this side of Cedar, all the way to Spruce, around to the hospital.
I think that's, let's do that. David?
Yes?
Can we, we're not going to hash this all out tonight, can we, if we've got a bunch of questions like this, can we, can these folks meet with you and...
Whatever you put.
Can we have another work session on it a little later on? We don't have to get, I don't want to spend, we can spend all night here.
That's, that's fine.
Let's do that, that way you have more time to better understand it, which is great, you know, so that would be awesome.
Because what I'm curious about is eventually if we...
And there's room for that.
We'd probably have to add a ward.
He ran.
We need to grow the wards, Ward Three wouldn't be able to grow. But we have to base this on, we can't be out of that 10% deviation.
The two came out through here and picked up progress. I mean, it's a funny shape, but I'm sure it'll come flying back in here. I didn't know what the, is that a 154 between...
These are your options.
Happy? We're going to, we're going to, him having a great idea, we're going to, we're going to move on, and then if anybody's got questions, they can come and sit and visit with you and David.
So if Ward Two's here, if you want to connect these somehow...
Because we could be here all night.
You're going to have to go through these numbers, 125, 167.
And in the end of it all, nobody's going to like anything.
Something's going to have to get here.
I'm going to like being in Ward One, though.
Temporarily.
This is two.
Yeah, temporarily.
But, oh, that's...
I was going to say something that I'm going to just... No.
Yeah, well, yeah, you might not like me being...
This is like overlies.
Christie? He's complaining. Well, I can't wait.
I was really thinking more about Christie.
It's fine, I was just curious, but I think I understand.
No, she'll be closest to you.
This, what order do you want to add that?
No, I was just curious if it was...
Because you couldn't get two.
Yeah, I'm sort of happy to see two, but it would have to go in this way.
Correct.
All right, Happy, let's move on to the ARPA. So...
That's right, we do have another one.
Well, I mean, we could talk, you guys, and you guys just sit and hash that out, you know?
No, you're fine, it's just more of understanding and...
Yeah, that's great.
...questioning whether you're doing it right.
We'll bring the map, so we can bring it up on the screen so you can see how it's doing.
Yeah, we'll do that, and, you know, so.
Watch my information on this.
And then if you got any questions, yeah. So we can work on this in the next work session, or I can delay it until April, I mean, or at this point, again, it's not going to affect this election, and nobody's running opposed anywhere, so.
I'd almost rather wait until, since we know we're going to have one new person, get that person involved, so if we wait till after that first April meeting, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, good point.
Okay, ARPA Fund, second tranche will be coming August or September, I just thought we might want to start talking about it now, especially since the rules have changed. The biggest change is that if we want to take a revenue deduction, they've now, instead of doing a complicated formula to figure out what that number was, and we knew we were within range to be able to do that, they now told us it could be up to $10 million. We're not getting $10 million, so it's whatever our amount is. I still think there's things that we want to invest in that are probably public works-oriented and not just general fund-type stuff, but that is now the allowance. So that opens it up to where we can do a few more things that we hadn't looked at doing before. So one of those was stormwater. Originally, stormwater was said that if it, it had to have something to do with the Clean Water Act, or what should be sewers, actually, but that's the way it's, way it's talked about. So now stormwater can be included in what we want to do if we want to talk about it from a general revenue point of view. So if you wanted to do a full review of the city and the, you know, what's surface water is, where it's running and where it's going, and what are the amounts, and how can we control it possibly and make some corrections, we can now look at trying to do that, and at the same time, we're trying to get somebody in to do that as an engineer, so that will work out. I, we'll have to look at what that cost is going to be, but we could probably get that done within the timeframe, because we have to have it done and paid for, we have to commit it by 2024, and we have to have it paid for by 2026. So that's something to think about. One of the other things we, that we've heard about, and I talked to Darwin Muzzi today, is EV charging stations. He in particular is a Tesla driver, and Tesla puts their own in, but still, he was, you know, he wants us to be able to encourage people to come to town and be able to charge their EVs. So that is something that we can, we can look at. Again, we can now spend that money on something along those lines, or hold off and see what the, what infrastructure is, we'll get that, get to that in just a minute. Next page. Looking at the website for City Hall, again, that's part of that one-time allowance, we can probably do the website for City Hall. For the parks, again, it would have to fall under the general fund rule, but we support the parks as it is now, so it would not be out of character for us to do something with the parks. So we can then, they really haven't pulled that into the infrastructure part of it, but we could pull in doing something with the parks and use some of that money for that to... And then bathroom improvements, same thing at Pier Marquette Park, we can, we can do the one-time, one-time allowance. So that's looking at the Pier Marquette Park improvements. So I've included a graph just on all of the things that we've talked about, that we would love to spend millions and millions of dollars on, from repairing sidewalks to creek crossings, to rehabbing Ninth Street, to a trail connection from the Welcome Center to the Amaro House. But I don't know if you had a chance to look, but under the federal infrastructure, this is something that we also have to keep thinking of. With this graph, I've kind of divided out where these items fall into different categories. So if we're going to do some of these items, the difference between ARPA is that we are getting the money deposited, boom, it's ours. Just got to justify it every year as to what you're spending. Infrastructure is going to require some thought ahead of time, probably have to do some engineering, so that we have those, that information available so we submit. It may be grants, it may be loans, but you're going to have to probably have some sort of match and have some, some information together, or you're not going to get, get what you want. This is kind of like the ARRA money from 10 years ago, they wanted shovel-ready product, projects, so people that had the engineering done and were ready to start their construction, they, they got the money. And I think the infrastructure, for us to have some competitive voice in this, we probably need to have some projects looked at ahead of time, such as, we're looking at, we've got the flat grant application for South Fourth Street, but what about North Fourth Street Bridge? You know, if we're going to do that, we probably ought to have that looked at from an engineering point of view, saying here, here, just sketch plans, stating what the problems are and explaining that, so that we can then submit that for whatever amount that we would need to submit for, you know, getting a cost estimate, what are the problems, what is, what kind of issues are there with it now, going through all that. So that was one of the things I wanted to kind of bring up tonight, to think about, to look at what federal infrastructure is, and then some of the items that we've had brought up, and what we want to spend that money on, or what we want to go after. Well, I would like to look at the, I think we do, that's a good idea, this, the bridges, we've got two bridges, we've got one on Main Street, and then this one on that end down here, those bridges, you know, so.
There's three.
Well, yeah.
Four, five.
Well, I'm...
Yeah, most, the two and most is repair.
Yeah, those two, Fourth Street and...
Third Street.
Yeah.
It's not really a bridge.
Big Culver.
Yeah. I was looking at the most traveled, those two, Main Street and that bridge, that little bridge there, see what you're saying.
One thing I'd like to see, which I know you all are probably tired of hearing me talk about parks, but kind of in this, I guess, catch-22 phase with the parks where we need to do something to get people in there and motivated about it, about it, but we need money to do that, so we need, you know, like, it's just kind of this, you need to have money if you want to do it, but you need people to come in, use your parks to be motivated to give the money and things, and so any efforts that we can make that way is, in my mind, not just because I'm, I'm working with the parks, but when we're given this amount of money to be good stewards with for our community, doing water projects and all those things, those are great, but it can be really hard, and definitely beneficial, and there's a lot of positives with that, but it can be really hard for the public to see the reward, or be able to, to really engage in that, you know? They have better water supply, and it's great infrastructure improvement, bridges the same and whatnot, but when we look at how our community uses our amenities and things, if we can provide parks for them, like, that's such a trigger to the reward center for our, for our residents, and one thing that we're really lacking right now is on the restroom end of it. People want to go to the parks, but you have to have those facilities available, and it's not the prettiest project to go out and ask for money for. It's, a lot of people be willing to donate towards the playgrounds or this or that, but when you say our first target is the restroom, it's like, well, let me know when you get that done. And, you know, or why aren't we going after that? But we can put in a nice playground, but if there's not a restroom there or close by, and if we don't have the accessibility standards to, to mirror it, it's, it kind of falls vacant. So if there's any consideration to be had, I think from a park standpoint, my first project that I would like to see funded is the restroom between the big pavilion and the basketball court. If we can't do both of them, that's the one I'd want to target first, because when people rent out that pavilion for their graduation parties or whatever it is, it's just not an adequate facility. And I think if we can get that fixed up, that area fixed up, we can really jump ahead on the, on the master plan, so.
I see merit in everything that you're advocating for there. I could, I could never prioritize that over anything related to stormwater.
Yeah.
Just because people, people hurt now over that, and...
Well, not only that, too, is, you know, we're talking in your, in that subdivision over there, those, those street repairs are going to be expensive, because there's going to have to be base.
Yeah.
And that's, that's where I, where you, I agree with that, and it's just, that's where...
Streets.
Streets, man, it's, Bob, you know what that's, you know, like, so.
I think that's affecting so many people, and I, I respect what you're saying, I agree that that is not pretty, that is something that needs to be done, but there are so many people right now being affected by these weather events, that I just think that really has to be the priority.
Absolutely, and I wasn't saying anything to disregard that or at all, but it, I mean, if we're going to put all the money there, that's fine, but if we're going to start picking up some other smaller projects from, from other standpoints, then I would just throw that out of their consideration.
Absolutely.
But I think we're also looking at, too, what is the cost of the stormwater, and what are our abilities to actually tackle it, you know, because over in my area, so much of the stormwater runs through the private properties, so what are we actually going to be able to do on those beyond getting the engineering and that, and the way that we're doing it?
I think that's the first bit of business, so we got to figure out what we can do. There might not be anything we can do, I, I'm not, the way I see it, I, unless, I mean, I don't know, but that's a, you know, it's a big issue, so.
It's an expensive issue.
Oh, sure it is, yeah.
I'd also...
And I can understand, you know, Ashley's part, you know, too, you know, if we don't show the taxpayers something they can put their hands on, you know, and whether it's a little project or, you know, something, I think we need to be wise in our decisions and divide up, you know? Because as much as I'd like to see Ninth Street rehab, just because of all of the school buses and the safety issue, you know, going on there, I mean, we've been lucky, there hasn't been anything more than some fender benders, but I'm telling you, in the morning of, the school's out, it's a big deal there and stuff, but...
And what the shame of that is, is, is that burden is on us when there's people coming, going to the school from all over the county, you know, and we're, we have to, the city residents have to burden, and that's where I say, even with the park, you look at that park up there, there's tons of people that live in the county all around that park that enjoy that, but there's no money being filtered through, and that's something maybe we need to talk to the commissioners about.
Yeah, I mean, the neighborhood that's right there, that is technically county.
It is all county, you know?
And they walk over. The park used to be county.
Yeah, so, and, and everybody struggles for that dollar, you know, but, you know, it's a, it's a challenge, so.
I'd also would really like to see us explore the electric vehicle charging stations more. I think that is not a huge dollar amount, that is something that are, is going to get people here and spending money, it's going to be one more reason to get people to come to town and stay to town, and it shows that we are forward-looking.
And how hard would it be to fund if we did not do it in this manner?
Right, right.
Well, and on the end of that, too, is, is that's going to generate revenue. That's the only way, we, we're not going to raise taxes, so we're going to have to, that's a way to generate revenue, you know, so. Because if nobody, nobody wants to hear about raising taxes, well, that's one way you can, you get something.
Right.
Tourism, and people getting, people here spending money.
Yeah.
Raising revenue.
So it, to me, it makes sense, because working on our stormwater is not going to raise our revenue. Maybe the bathrooms will get a few more...
I'm with that, with tourists.
We need, we need something.
People out there, you want a decent facility out there when people come to visit, you know, so I...
And I can agree with the, the electric units, too, because, I mean, we want to be forward-thinking, and if, if that's the way our vehicles are, are moving, we, we need to do what we can to accommodate it now, because we have a history in this community of, of not being as forward-thinking, and then we get ourselves into positions where we don't have the proper land for that, or...
I think the county's already starting to look at that, aren't they?
They, they have been talking about it.
Yeah, so.
So if there's something that we can do now before we overbuild ourselves in the future where we can't better accommodate it, then...
So Happy, is there any possibilities through citizens, wall bash, button?
No, it's through the infrastructure, that's where you're going to find the EV, and I think that, again, is going to be a portion of it, not going to be the whole thing. County wants to do it in the county parking lot, we're looking at doing it at the Welcome Center, because that's our property. If you have a better idea or a better spot. I don't want to do it on private property, you could put it at Rojas, if you, you know, you go up to Schnucks, they've got charging stations there, Commerce Bank has it across the highway, but for us, we would need to put it, and we'd want it down in our historic district, so we have people stop, do their charging, and then maybe do a little shopping, and then take off to the next location.
So I don't disagree with what you said. I like the spirit of what you said. Hopefully, it, it wouldn't come down into an either-or proposition, but I have to say, though, you're, I think you're correct in, in your point that you make about revenues. Some people would argue, though, that the revenues that we take in have not taken care of our assets that we have right now, and I think we're, I think that's the story of this table in this room, is that we're behind the game. Every time we look, we're behind in, in things that, and I don't think, I'm not pointing the finger, it's nobody's fault at this table, but we're so behind, we've got to play catch-up in every... it's nobody's fault at this table, but we're so behind, we've gotta play catch-up, and every, every time we look around, that those streets and that stormwater, we have to have some, some, some major priority there. That, that's just my opinion. Totally respect all the comments that have been made to this point, but I, that's my position on that.
Is there value to putting out a survey, just asking the community where they would potentially like the, to see the money allocated to road infrastructure, stormwater, parks, that, and, and kind of get a gauge on, on that? Maybe it's a multiple question thing, where, you know, what's your first choice, what's your second? Or, or asking them to present, put a percentage to it? Because there's a, there's so many just different needs in the community, and I don't know how many of my residents are gonna call me after this meeting to say, hey, I don't like your park idea, I want our streets done, or hey, that's a good idea, go with the parks, or, yeah, about that charging station. I'd probably get an electric vehicle if there was a charging station, you know, or something, but I, I just, I don't have enough gauge on what the public wants beyond my own power.
Interactions.
Right, we can do a, a survey monkey, and put it out there, and see what kind of response we get, but you're not gonna limit it to just residents, it's gonna be everybody in the county, or whoever wants to fill it in. Same thing we did with the parks.
And what weight do you put on, on answers that those respondents give, like, uh, do we, we don't suggest that we just take that survey and implement based on, on the survey? I mean, I hope we're not.
Yeah, no, I, I'm just looking for some way to, you know, I don't know if a town hall would be the most, most functional on, on such a big topic, like, well, I mean, with so many different areas to potentially put the money, I don't know how constructive it would be trying to limit that within an hour talk, or whatever. But I'm just looking for some.
Totally.
Yeah, we pretty much have spent up our first tranche for about $450,000.
So that's what we're gonna have?
Yeah, so.
It goes quickly. But, but we're also looking at what federal infrastructure is gonna do, too, so.
Yeah.
We've got kind of a multi, we're looking at multiple things here.
Yeah. But what you were saying earlier, Happy, was basically, we need to think about how we're gonna spend the ARPA funds in anticipation of infrastructure.
No, you need to learn how to, we need, there's two things. ARPA funds are gonna be one thing, infrastructure's something else. So you're gonna have to figure out matching funds for that. You really, you're not supposed to use ARPA for other federal money, it has to be separated.
But we could do engineering with ARPA, that could hopefully later lead to some of the infrastructure money. That's, sorry, that's what I was getting at, that if we think about doing that now, then possibly later.
We're already talking about doing engineering on stormwater.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, yeah, I think that's, we go with that.
Yeah, it's just gonna be hard to convince somebody to draw future people in to do things when we have a plumbing business getting flooded, or, you know, residents, it's just, we just need to spend our money wisely.
Well, if, if we're being fair on those two issues, we've got, we've got the ability to spend on EV stations only within infrastructure, according to, to this matrix, whereas stormwater, we've got ARPA and infrastructure, we've got two opportunities there.
In that case, I'm making a recommendation, with infrastructure, instead of pulling it out of ARPA, I figured pulling it out of infrastructure would make more sense, yes.
And it's not a big dollar amount?
Right.
So Happy, who pays, you know, when you put in an electric charging station? I mean, I've seen the one at Schnucks, and, uh, so who pays for the power consumption?
The person that charges, you have to swipe a card.
Thing you swipe a card, or you have it on your phone, yeah. We just have to pay for the installation?
Yeah, yeah. You know, Tesla will automatically charge you, they, they know where you are, I guess, all the time, and when you plug in, it just goes into your, you know, gets charged to your account, yeah.
Oh, you just hook up and it?
Oh, you start the car with your phone.
Right.
There is no key.
So are we trying to account for $450,000 in this exercise, is that what?
Well, we need to start thinking about that, yes, because we, we came to you with the first $450,000, spend it pretty darn quickly, or spending it pretty darn quickly, so.
We'll spend this one quick, too.
We need to, we need to, you know, we need to think about where we're going with the other $400 and some thousand, because we have to allocate by December 31st of 2024, and it has to be spent by 2026, or it gets taken back.
So recap our first $450.
Uh, we've got the water line, uh, we've got Parkway Drive, the water lines under the creek at Fourth Street, Main Street.
Electric.
Water plant, electric.
Water plant, electric, yeah, so that pretty much sucks it all up.
Parkway Drive.
So it's gone.
Yep, and the IT, cybersecurity. And we're doing cybersecurity with City Hall, so we've got all this IT equipment that we've been installing and putting in.
On the, the first column.
Sure, so we get a lot, we get a little bit of time to think about this.
A little, yeah, but we, you know, I don't wanna put it off forever.
When, when do you wanna, what do you want, what do you want from the board, and when do you want it?
I'd like to have decisions probably by the end of April, once we get our new board personnel. I think that's, you know, we need to then set our priorities, so that we can start working towards that.
Well, one of our priorities, I think we all agree, is stormwater, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see what that would potentially amount to, to see what would be left over. Because that's kinda what I'm talking, like, I don't wanna take away from stormwater, that wasn't, when I was bringing that up, I wasn't trying to take away from some of the bigger projects, but if we can, if there's enough left over that we can sneak in some smaller projects, I'd like consideration to be for, for.
Yeah, I don't think stormwater, the engineering, I don't think it would take that whole amount. It's not like it's been all $450,000, so you need to have one, two, three, four, five.
So in that stormwater, you know, discussion and stuff, we're talking about phase one, to get an engineer.
It's only assistance.
The cost to get an engineer hired, to study it.
We're looking at an on-call engineer, yes, that can do a number of different things. We've, we've given them options on different things.
Why do you point that out, though?
Now and in the future.
Only that much money. So whenever we get that cost, just for the engineering there, will not be a cost in for, to remedy those things?
They can, they can probably include it if we ask for that in the.
Right, we'd like to have a ballpark figure saying.
That's one project for one big city.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what we would request, when they do the engineering, if you're gonna find problem points, estimate what those costs will be.
Right, so that would be from all of the engineering firms that propose?
So, the way that works, it's an RFQ, so we will talk, we will look at what they've submitted, pick who we wanna talk to, talk to the company that we want to, that we've rated the highest, discuss with them what their costs are. It's not a bid, so you have to go, if you don't like the first group, then you go to the next group. So you can't, we're not looking at what the bottom-line cost of the survey's gonna be, or the, the engineering's gonna be. You have to hire the contractor, and then you'll pay for that engineering, and you'll give an estimate of what that is.
So I wanna make sure I understand your matrix here. If I'm gonna rank, rank order this list, one of my considerations, regardless of what it is, is how many opportunities I have per line item to fund. So some of these, some of these items have up to three opportunities to fund, is that what I'm seeing?
Yes.
Okay, so I should, I should consider that as our rank order, like, hey, I've only got one opportunity to fund a certain thing, and it's only ARPA, so that makes most sense to make that consideration, whereas another one, I have three different disparate opportunities to, to fund that, and I could, I could do that in another way.
Because then you can split it up, if you wanted transportation and infrastructure, you've got those two funds, and you're not touching ARPA for whatever project that is.
Okay, so you could take a line item and divide it amongst those different funds?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
What I'm looking, what I look at here is what, what I think applies, based on the information we've been given, for ARPA and for the infrastructure.
So then the exercise becomes, start with a top line $450,000, and just make a ledger, rank order these, and subtract, and divide.
Again, that's one group, the other group is the infrastructure. So the infrastructure, then, is gonna probably go with whatever you see on the rest of these line items. You have general fund, but you have water sewer that we'll probably use as a match. Park fund, you can do something, you can always pour some money out of the park. Transportation, others gonna be whatever.
Yeah, that helps.
Then we have tourism, so.
Okay.
Those are taxes that have to be spent, particularly on their particular group.
And on the, the infrastructure, do we know what the match is generally? No.
Usually, with, well, usually with federal, it's gonna be 75-25, if you're lucky, 50-50, in some cases. But they haven't released that information yet.
Okay, thank you. So we have until April to ask a bunch of questions?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And argue amongst ourselves.
David?
Do we want a redistricting committee? I feel like if you're, but redistricting in April, and ARPA in April, April's gonna be some long session. Which I'm fine with.
Good point.
Bringing back the perfect map, this room is all gonna agree with you.
Absolutely, sir.
I vote yes for whatever he brings back now, so.
I think we'll weigh it out, and we'll come up with, tell what we feel for everybody, so. We have two meetings, so.
I mean, you can send things in advance, so that we can ask questions, so that maybe we can cut down on the time of those work sessions? Maybe?
I think Dave would for the meetings, anyway. What I'm starting to think.
We need to see his face.
Is there anything else, Happy? That's all I have, is everybody okay with that? You wanna adjourn the meeting? Yes, please, we're adjourned.
Thank you.